Visited gorge this past year. And you should know, and I was gonna say this to you, you should know. One point six, one point six.
That includes all of the.
All that, all, all the, that's Raleigh County. I don't know exactly, I was gonna say, I don't know.
But that's the total part.
Yeah, they didn't give us a test because I wanted exactly how many. So you get a general idea of how many people we support. Compared to Nicholas. That's all I heard. Our system is flex. Does anybody know what Nicholas County, McDowell County, Wyoming County is? Well, it's not flex. But Nicholas County is going to flex. They visit Raleigh County just like I do. So I just wanted to give.
What is flex?
It, it, it's.
So it's a difference, so what do they use in the other counties? Something less.
Emergitech. And I can't remember what, y'all was at McDowell, I was, I was visiting.
But what's the difference between flex and like the system that.
Flex is total records management. Like our law enforcement, they're all reporting through it. Actually, I was doing additional not long ago. So it's all their law enforcement records are integrated with that, it's not just a pad system for here. Also, our records management, police records management, our records management, DMX records management. It's an entire suite of tools. With the records with, you name it, everything all comes together. Where in a lot of county run cat systems, it's just cat. There's no R M S involved. There's no records.
So ours is more comprehensive.
It's more, much more elaborate, and a lot of counties don't have integrated mapping. It's actually just a layout that says this, yes, so and this, and that's it. That's all it is.
Could you guys hear? Sorry, interrupt.
I interrupt you all the time. We all interrupt each other.
Next, we need next. All the next gen.
That was though, was that when we were in Logan? They did a. They just started.
Next, next gen nine one one is the new upgrade for the phone, new phone emerging technology. Which is coming down the pike sooner than later. So right now, we, so right now, we can already see, receive text alerts in the nine one one center, you can be sitting in Montgomery. In your, like you're sending a text message to somebody, you just hit nine one one and then start to body your text, and you'll get it. They'll get it in the back, it pops up on the screen, text coming in, nine one one. They can respond to you just like I'm responding to you on my cellphone through the back. The next gen nine one one is an all cloud-based atmosphere. Meaning that the back room is blank, you have no servers in your back room. Nothing's controlled onsite, everything's pretty much controlled offsite. Uh, but it's complete redundancy backup, there's like five different backups to this system in the next gen nine one one. Uh, but it's coming faster than later, and it's emerging throughout the state of West Virginia now. We're in first phase, first phases of next gen nine one one. And if I'm not mistaken, the new legislative session coming up, they're gonna try to advance moving on to stage two. Of next gen nine one one, which new literature should be coming out very soon about that.
It's also enhanced location.
Correct, yes.
More exact location to help. It's, it's a whole lot better than the old style of the Annie Alley and the independent on that. Basically goes through that.
It's, it's almost like a, a phase three locator. Like a GPS pinpoint, bam, here's right where you are.
So they always, the, we always had problem with the mobile side. Yeah, so next year, number one, on the mobile, you actually get the phase three, the true location of the device.
So right now, what he's talking about on triangulation, so no matter. When you dial nine one one on your cellphone, your cellphone picks up the closest available tower to you. When it releases that data across the network, it sends a triangulation of your location to your closest towers. Comes off your alley and your Annie, your alley and your Annie gives us. A precise area, they're gonna be within this perimeter, but we don't know exactly where you're at.
And it's actually, if it is a cellphone, it's just gonna give you the address of the tower site.
The tower site itself.
Yeah, we got a quick, when we were in Logan that day, we got like a quick.
Yeah, it's on a dream sheet, but it's like I said, it's coming faster than we probably expected to come. Uh, with them introducing it into legislation. Uh, to move it on down the pike, it's probably gonna come within the next three to five years. And that's the emerging technology that's out on the forefront that we have to definitely keep an eye on.
Now we got Pablo Escobar triangulation.
And like I said, Logan County is the first, um, nine one one center in the state of West Virginia to go all exclusive. Cloud-based. Nothing in the back room, no server, no nothing, all their stuff is monitored in five different locations across the United States. So if one location goes down, they never know it, the other part, the other place just keeps trying to untuck it. My theories, I like having access to the back room to know where the stuff's at and not in cyber somewhere.
Yeah, the cloud backup is, has vulnerabilities.
And that's, of course, that's what the next gen is, it's cloud-based.
Is it Cromer compliant? The system that you currently hold, since it's all integrated together.
Bill, what's it?
Is the current system Cromer compliant?
What do you mean by Cromer?
Cromer is federally required system or verify.
C G S and all that, C G S dangers.
No. This is, anything that's coming in, any of your devices.
Anything that's gonna be connected to a federal system.
Right, like fixed compliance, almost like encryption.
No, exactly, you have to go through whoever's using it. Like in D P, we had the U, had the head of all our people have to be Cromer compliant, like all their companies. They had to go through, like this next, to verify that who was actually, five, four was actually the person involved.
The only thing I'm familiar with that we work with Motorola on is keeping our C G S compliance. Because your passing C G S data through them. That's the only thing we really have to be compliant, we're dual layer, dual-layer security and C G S. And actually getting ready to go to another layer once they change the federal. But that's all we really have to be concerned with. And of course, HIPAA is already there and is sporadically saying that.
That, and then we have to go through the system guidelines, with, about the system.
You know, so I just wanna give you a little background on the nine one one center, the calls. And. Uh, the information they take compared to the other counties. And, uh, right now, we're working twelve-hour shifts, I think is understaffed. And I think it's underfunded. On twelve hour, twelve hour shifts, I'm just giving a little more background on the schedule I made, the schedule I made. Is to take in consideration holidays. Sick leave, vacation. Right now, they're working twelve-hour shifts, if anybody gets sick, it's hard to pick up somebody without paying overtime. This, right, right now, this center pays so much overtime, it is ridiculous. It's understaffed. So. That's why I got involved and started seeing all the problems, there's more, there was more to it than that. We now have a G I S coordinator. I asked the commission to have a G I S coordinator, we needed a G I S coordinator. There's a lot of steps involved in turning this thing around, it's not, it, it wasn't necessarily staff's fault. There's a lot of issues in this, but funding is a big reason for some of these issues. So. I wanna bring to your attention. Tell you my thoughts. To everybody, thanks.
Did, did all of you have the opportunity to tune into the, and I'm not sure everybody did, but to the. Regular commission meeting where Tom gave a presentation on this and talked about the numbers. Do, do you have any of those charts or anything else?
Do you know, if you could email it to Kevin, he could.
Well, we can, we can forward it to everybody, but basically, what he did was an analysis of, of. How many more people we need, a big issue we've had, it has been with dispatcher turnover. And, um, so we, we need to give them more money, be able to recruit and retain good dispatchers. And keep them in a professional development so they can stay here and move up in the system. Um, team leaders and that sort of thing, shift leaders. But, so he, he had the numbers in it that corresponded with that, he had the numbers in it that corresponded with upgrading our technology to get it. To where it can be fully functional with what we have, and it, there's a lot of capability we haven't been able to maximize because of. Um, staffing issues and stuff like that, training issues, so. It, it had an analysis of basically, you know, where we've been and where we should be. And, and the addition, and where our income is coming from, and he had some recommendations in it about how we might. Um, create, generate more income, and one of them was to increase the. Fee that we charge businesses within the county. By how much, Tom, what were the numbers?
It was four fifty to nine fifty. On the landline, please.
And that was gonna increase, what was the deficit, do you remember the full total?
Three hundred and thirty-three more thousand, three hundred and thirty-six, four thousand dollars.
And what was the deficit we were trying to make up, wasn't it like twice?
Like five hundred something.
Okay, so, so we were running it, basically, if we did everything we're supposed to do, we would have, we would need. Five hundred thousand more dollars annually. Um, to run, well, some of them would have been one-time costs, right, the, some of the upgrades. And then some of it was gonna be recurring annual costs, and increasing the business fee was gonna be part of it, and he was proposing that we. The commission put up about a hundred thousand of it, of the remaining two hundred thousand, and then we. Query the municipalities about whether you guys wanted to contribute. Based on the number of calls, because we have all of that data, based on what we're. The service we're providing your municipalities, or whether you thought that should come out of your municipality's portion of the fire. Because it needs to come from somewhere. And so we wanted your input on it, and, and also, of course, if you have any other ideas of where some of it could come from, because right now. To my knowledge, other than funding a fire coordinator, fire levy money isn't being spent whatsoever on the nine one one center operating costs, is that? True?
I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah.
Or any ideas from you all.
Right, I mean, we're open to ideas, but we, we do have a significant deficit we need, we've had complaints from. Um, our fire service, our police, less our police service, but still, everybody's had some issues with ambulance services. Um, and some of it's, you know, miscommunication, but some of it is because we've been unable to. Retain people, we've been unable to, um, use our technology. Train them and use the technology to the extent we could to automate a lot of the things that right now they have to do manually. For example, um, the, all, we have several fires, fourteen, sixteen. Firefighters, fire districts in the county, and they. They have their own dividing lines, and it, we did have sixteen different sets of rules about how we're supposed to dispatch them. And if we can get all of that programmed in. Our nine one one operators don't have to take the time to try to figure all that out, and especially some that are new, you know. Or just barely trained, you know, so. We're just trying to figure out ways that we can get everything up to speed, pay them a livable wage. Because for the shifts they work and the stuff they go through, they really aren't making very much money, I was pretty mortified to find out we have people eleven dollars an hour. Working in here for twelve-hour shifts and doing what they do, and not, they're not allowed to leave for lunch. So, um, we've been trying to figure out how to fix these things. Um, with, you know, and, and we're not gonna be able to do it just based upon. The county's budget at this time, because the county's budget is, we're just now starting to rebuild our budget, because we have been spending a whole, whole lot. And, except for the last two years where we haven't. Some of the upgrades we can probably fund, um, but the ongoing expenses are something we're gonna need to find another source. To come in until or unless our tax revenue increases. And that's just that.
Another cell phone rate is gonna go up.
Well, I mean, I, it's going for legislature in January, so we don't know whether it's gonna go up or not. It could go up, it could stay the same, it could be less.
That's, that's, maybe it goes up three dollars. Then, you're talking.
If it goes up, yeah.
And I don't think, but I mean, that's one revenue.
No, that, that will, that will definitely help.
I think it's coming.
And it'll come in just in time for the next generation upgrade that we need, you know what I mean? We need to figure out how to function off the system we have, and then start the, go from there, which we're not fully using. Our system.
But this, this is still analog, correct?
No, I think we're digital, aren't we?
But what I wanna hear is, I mean, I threw out suggestions at the last meeting, and I got all kinds of suggestions, I wanna hear suggestions from everybody else. This lady in the back, I don't know your name, I'm sorry. You, you talked about, you shaking your head no, don't, don't raise the, and, and I just wanna.
As a landline person who still uses my landline, I don't use it, and it's sixty-three dollars a month.
Are you a business?
No.
I would just business.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
For sixty-three dollars a month for my alarm system to be able to call here. If I was a business, that's even worse, that's. More people have cellphones, if you would put an indiscriminate amount tax on that.
See, we, we did, that's, that we came this year to the legislature.
But the phone isn't, aren't they both P S C related?
So the fake county commission has regulations to where they can regulate the landline fees. They can be wherever, between two dollars and fifty cents, up to ten, twelve dollars, depending on how they regulate it. The only thing that is governed through legislative orders right now is the wireless fees for cellphones. And it's at three dollars and forty-seven cents, I think, right now. And every two years, they have to go and. Evaluate all the data for the last two years, and the increase can either go up by twenty or twenty-five percent, or in decrease by twenty, twenty-five percent. Depending on what your population is and your correlation of your fees.
To our population, doesn't take any consideration, the people that come here and stay here, we, we, we have a little abnormal case here. You know, it's not, we have forty-some thousand people live here, Nicholas County has twenty-four, McDowell has eighteen thousand. But they, none of them have the influx of tourists that we have, so we do add a little extra.
So you're, so the landline fees that we only, the, sorry, the wireless fees that we get. Are those that are based with the address within this area. People who travel to our county, people who stay here in Airbnb's, hotels and stuff like that, even though they may be here for an extended amount of time. Nobody benefits off of that except for their home state, whether, if they get that monies or not. Um, state of West Virginia, like I said, is through the P S C, who only regulates those, and that money is dispersed every quarter. Through the counties throughout the state. The only thing that has to be done by the commission is the same thing as three readings of an ordinance, we were presenting this, this is what we wanna do. One, two, three, we've read it, public opinion, this is where we're going to, it is filed in the clerk's office, it is then sent to the P S C. The P S C then sends it out to all the, so, the phone companies, this is the new landline rates, and that's where it goes.
Believe me, I, I don't believe in raising rates or raising taxes, I'm a conservative. I own the business myself, I, I, I get it, but that's why I want some, anybody else got any suggestions?
I do have some suggestions for you, have you looked at partnering with the colleges and the high school? For the criminal justice programs or emergency services programs? And get those kids in here so they can see the backside of what they may encounter. In, for college credit or extra credit, or.
About interns?
They don't necessarily have to be an intern, but as a college student, maybe they get paid a site income. Maybe they don't get eleven dollars an hour, maybe they get something less. But once they accumulate X hours. It gets half of their credit for the class.
So will they leave after that?
Unknown.
See, the issue here is, there's a lot of training, there's, and it takes a. It takes a certain person. To take these calls. And, and, it, it just takes a certain person to do that. And I'm not that person. There's just a certain, and believe me, me and, me and Tom just talked about this. I even knew it before, I said, how do you, how do you even tell if somebody, because I knew it's, it's an issue. And they gotta deal with a lot of malaria. So I asked her, she said, it's really difficult. She sits down and she grills them, and you can usually tell whether they're gonna do it or not. And then most time they go back here, and then they stop for them, it's a different, it's, it's a different, it's a different beast back here. So to get an intern to come here for a college credit, I hope that that may be a good idea, and she, I think she wrote it down. And then you got training, there's a certain amount of training these people have. There's an expense that has to do it. Every year, I mean, it's not, it's not something, it's not more to talk. And learn how to run a gas register. Believe me, it's not, it's different. It's a good idea, but. It's a different beast.
Did you have others?
I think that we're, we're all very aware of the importance of. The nine one one center and the people that work there, nobody discounts that at all. But have you talked to other county commissions that have nine one one centers, which I guess every county? And to see what they're doing, we can't be the only county that has this issue. Other counties have tourists, or they have colleges that. In the summer, then, that are not as busy, during school, there's a bunch of people that are there.
There's some of the rates, some landline rates, nine fifty, a, uh. For residential and, uh, commercial. Or business.
And isn't Raleigh, Raleigh County doesn't run, it's nine one one.
Raleigh County and Mercer County are the only two in the state that has their own standalone boards under legislative orders. There's always gonna be talk about reach.
I mean, I know, and I'm not, you couldn't do that.
Right.
If you could do it where the population is not.
There's always gonna be, there's always gonna be talk about it.
I, I think it eventually will be that way.
Yeah, I'm, that's not an answer for today, I'm, I'm just way out there, I just see smaller counties. The only way to do this and do the vision.
So, I mean, take it, take. They like, so if you, if you wanna look at it this way, let's look at, go up north a little bit, you have Harrison County. Harrison County also dispatches for Tyler County. So it's Harrison Tyler, they dispatch their nine one one center because Tyler's so small. They don't have their, they can't afford their own P S A. So they dispatch. Nicholas and Clay used to do that, until the new order says if you, if a county commission. Is receiving fire service funds, you must answer nine one one calls in a P S A. So Clay County now has their own nine one one center. So they have to answer those calls. They used to roll the calls to Jankar to do emergency medical dispatch, because they were not trained to give medical instructions over the phone. Now that they answer that in that P S A, they are required to have trained personnel there. So if you're answering phones in your county as a P S A, then you are required to have all this training and everything. So, regionalization, I'm not gonna say no. But further down the line, it's probably something that's coming.
I'll tell you something, I was heading to Montgomery, I saw you that day, we were filming the Capitol, and there was a big rock in the middle of the road. Well, in the meantime, our nine one one center had gone down because somebody cut the lines when they were mowing the yard.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I called nine one one, um, non-emergency, just to let them know, look, you know, we need to get somebody out here to clear this. Rock out of the road on sixty-one. Between, and I told them where I think it was rocks in, and page or something, but I told them, you know, as closely as possible where I put it. And it was routed to Raleigh, and it occurred to me after that it wasn't our nine one one, because I was like, who in our nine one one doesn't know Route sixty-one? You know, 'cause I kept saying, he said, what's the name of the road? I said, Route sixty-one, what's the name of Route sixty-one? You know, I kept saying the same thing over and over, but that's another thing that comes in handy, because our operators get to learn our area. And they understand, like, they can ask, right or left of the fork, or, you know, something like that, in places where our addressing hasn't gotten squared away yet. Um, but, you know, I, I noticed it, and then I had a second thought, I'm like, no, it wasn't our folks, they know what Route sixty-one is, you know, and I really.
We get routed to all counties, and they have to split it up here.
Actually makes up my, it's not, uh, or Tyler, it's Taylor, Harrison Taylor, not Tyler.
Or do they think, anything could be for nine one one?
No, nothing.
We got more money than anybody.
I agree.
I mean, they could build that in probably to their villains.
Well, park service pays. Because we support park service. And they pay.
Is, is there other, there's, there's no, um. Records on nine one one. Directly, I mean, you don't dispatch.
I always do a police agency, I don't, I don't know.
You don't, we don't dis, we don't dispatch records, other than.
Only for request and rotation, yeah.
Oh, you mean like we're. No, we don't do that.
And most, you know, issues, question you asked about commissioners, I've been to see the directors at, at a lot of these nine one ones, I was just in McDowell. I'm going to Mon County, I think, next week, or next time me and Jerry get, get together. I've been to a couple nine one ones, and I talk to the directors, I don't talk to commission. Most of these don't run twelve-hour shifts, I haven't talked to none of them yet, we're the only one that I know that runs twelve-hour shifts. That causes a big, big problem with overtime, because, you know, you're shaking your head, you know, I mean, I'm in business. You know, you do, when you run twelve-hour shifts, if somebody's sick or something happens, I mean, it caused a big issue all the time. There needs to be enough staff here on eight-hour shifts, all the other nine one one centers. That I've talked to, the directors, they have eight-hour shifts, so we have to increase the staff with eight-hour shifts.
Well, and another, you've talked about McDowell and Wyoming, and.
I've been to Raleigh, been to Canola.
And with the increase in the Hatfield McCoy Trail, their tourist population, how have they dealt with that?
That day, when I was at McDowell, she said they got, they showed me their, they have the mapping on their system, but. There wasn't that, none of that, I mean. Now the ordinary, I guess.
They don't, they don't capitalize from that.
Well, you're, you're saying that with the increase in tourists, you're getting an increase in calls, therefore you need an increase in staff, correct?
Well, I'm saying we have, we already have an increase in people here.
Okay, so. They weren't used to having the Hatfield McCoy Trail, they have an influx of people, how have they dealt with it?
I mean, I. I mean, I didn't answer that, but I'm sure the influx of people that they have is nowhere near what we have. And, and I know that doesn't answer your question, but I tell you what, I'll call the lady, she's retired, I believe, end of this week. Friday, so I need to call, I'll call her and ask her, but their calls are minimal.
Two that, excuse me, two dispatchers, one at one time.
And she told me that their calls, she told me, she said, we don't have a lot of calls. I mean, I mean, I didn't, I could get the data, I started to get the data, but with eighteen thousand, uh, population, and they don't have a park. They don't have a park service they support. Yeah, I was telling her, we support the park service, she said, how am I, how am I gonna get that? Because I was telling her they fund. Part of nine one ones, and she said, how can I get that, so do you have a park, she said, no, I said, okay, you're not gonna get it. But I mean, we talked, we, we talked for two, three hours, but I'll call and ask her about that.
I think Lucy has a good point, that she's trying to discuss drawing a comparison. Between the influx of tourism and what would be increased activity at your nine one one center.
I understand, but we're talking about, we're not talking apples to apples, because we're gonna have a. A, a hat, like Hatfield McCoy trailer, and New River Gorge is divorced anything that, that. I'm sure that they have on that.
Well, I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit, because we were there at the infancy of the creation of the Hatfield McCoy Trail. And it was literally college kids developing those trails for them. And what influx of visitors and businesses they had created, created down there is tremendous. And I have to disagree. And I have to disagree. And you've got people from the Midwest that are coming here to run that Hatfield McCoy Trail. The, the lodgings, the food service, the RV sales and services, I mean, that area literally explodes.
So let me ask you a question again, if I would call and ask her what her call data is. Her call data is a quarter of our call data, how does that even compare to what I'm talking about?
Well, I, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think you're getting off center. No, 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 call data drives labor, it drives the center.
That's what I'm saying, though, but ask her what her call data was before the creation of the Hatfield McCoy Trail. And what it is now. And, and see the difference, and how did that affect their operation, I think that's what this is trying to get at.
I mean, I don't know why we don't hit up the tourism office, I mean, they're willing to spend money on everything else for nine one one.
Maybe that's where you get some of your data.
I think rather than looking just at West Virginia. We may wanna contact the tourism office, but I think you need to look at those gateway communities that are actually beside national parks. That have taken small communities like ours and. Flipped them over, uh, what are their calls, how did they, uh, handle the influx of the number? I mean, we're the newest national park, so there's, you know, sixty two others that have. History that we may find valuable of how they handled. The nine one one calls, um, how that, you know, they were burdened, the community had to be burdened, um. We're all figuring that out now, so all of a sudden everybody's. Um, but maybe that would give us, rather than looking at, nothing against Logan or. Um, Nicholas or the other counties, but I think if we looked at other national park communities. And how those, uh, especially in Colorado, there's a few that would be, uh, good, um.
Montana.
Maybe that would help, give us some thought that it's not, and they may have different regulations, Tom, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I, I'm trying to figure out how, I guess I look at stuff a little different, I'm probably looking at it wrong. But, but when I look at call data, you gotta also look at, how long is that person on that phone with that, with somebody having a heart attack? Or somebody, I mean, how long, how, how, how long was that person on that phone, phone call for? I mean, it's, you know, call data.
Thirty or forty minutes.
I mean, you know, so I mean. I mean, I, I just have a hard time, call data is call data, no matter whether you're, if it's a tourist. Or if it's another county, call data drives everything. When I, when I made your schedule, I didn't make it off McDowell County, Raleigh County or Canola County, I made the schedule off call data. If you take the call data, you'll figure out how many people you need to have here.
I have your spreadsheet too, if you want to.
In hours, I mean, you got certain amount of calls on certain hours, you know, you're. You're busier certain times of the week, certain times of the day, and nine one one centers the same way. And the last five years called that, that I studied, believe it or not, it's consistent over the last five years. You make schedules by call data. Is these people gonna be on the phone for one minute, five minutes, thirty minutes? No matter where you go, whatever county. There's no, there's no comparison than the true comparisons to call data. That's how I make my schedules. Customers and everything, so I mean.
Do you have more calls during tourist season versus non-tourist season?
I'll let Phillip answer that.
So would you be safe to say that your tourists are causing the increase of calls?
It could be traffic going on, too.
Yeah, I mean, it could be direct or indirect.
Well, here's something, like when we had the fire in the gorge, um, they were getting calls from everybody who crossed the bridge. That there was a fire, even though our fire service had already been on scene for twelve hours or more, you know? They're gonna get calls from anybody, want to make sure somebody knows. You know, that, that that's going on, and so it's not, it's not only just like number of incidences, it's, you know, number of calls. And how long they have to stay on the phone to notify somebody, yes, thank you for letting us know, we've got people out there, whatever.
Would you be willing to entertain looking at your, for a volunteer squad to be able to call in and fill in? For example, volunteer firemen or auxiliary emergency services staff. To get them trained so that during tourist season or during holidays, or when someone calls in sick. You can fill in with a volunteer as opposed to a paid position.
They have to go through a certain amount of training in the state, go ahead.
No, that's what I was gonna say, that is, who would pay for, they still have to be trained, they would still have to have all the required classes, you know, that the dispatchers have to have. So if they're volunteers, who's gonna pay for that training?
Then you get an emergency services grant through something, there's all kinds of grants out there to train them.
Does anybody know Jerry Long? Had a conversation with him going to McDowell County, he understands call data. When I talk to him about call data here, call data y'all should be pulling up once a month, once a quarter and studying for staffing. That's what Jerry does at, at Jane Care, they utilize call data for everything. Even those call data, most likely somebody's gonna have heart attacks during the year, believe it or not, they study all this stuff. That's, that's, that's a great business sense, this is no different when you look at call data and you look at staffing. But it's anywhere where you're at.
This area has for years had an influx of tourism, so.
This is the first time this nine one one center has been looked at and needs to be adjusted. Everybody in this room can say, can tell you that they've had issues with the way stuff is done here, John?
Yes. There have been issues, there have been issues with every agency.
So I mean, we're changing stuff, we're trying to improve it, we've done things the last six months. We see, at least I think I see where it needs to go, what needs to be done to improve it. Now, it's the first time in a long time that anybody's took initiative to do this. So, I mean, I'm thought.
Improvements, it just takes, I mean, it's taking.
Point, I mean, there are a lot of things that kind of, I, I think things, offices that were outside of the courthouse were neglected. And it, whether it was the David Port Center, we were down at the park earlier today trying to. Boost morale down there and answer questions, cause they didn't understand why they had to handle their payroll a certain way, and it's because we didn't know we were doing it wrong, and so. You know, we had to review all these things, and then we figure it out, and then we go down and we're trying to standardize everything and. Make sure people know how to use their overtime and if they're eligible, and that's what we think, but that wasn't being done, and a lot of these off. Campus, you know, offices, including this one, um, were basically left on their own unless they screwed up. And that they messed up, by God, they heard about it, um, but they weren't helped and they weren't given help to fix it. They were to the point where they were too scared, you know, even in two years I've been here to come to us. With some of the problems or, or with requests for things that they wanted to do, because, you know. Somebody got yelled at or in trouble or, you know, for even raising issues with us, so it would just be a matter of, you know, upset. Um, customers of the nine one one center calling in and complaining directly here, complaining to us. Um, and so it's taking time, and I think Commissioner Luizos did this county a favor by coming out here and digging into this data. Having these conversations with our staff and figuring out what we need to do. To get up to the level where we think we should be for the citizens of this county, it's, it's not a matter of, we want to have next generation. Three or whatever, we're not trying to get, we're trying to maximize what we already have. And trying to get up to the staffing level we should always have been at, or should have been at all this time, you wouldn't believe our turnover rates at dispatchers. We're getting to where we wanna rotating, you know, just keep posting up at all times, but we can't even get. A stock of resumes in, in the desk, just to pull from when somebody resigns, because. We're having so much trouble getting them up to speed and retaining them because of how low we're paying them. I mean, we, we, those are things that we have to fix in order to run this place well. You know, we're not looking to try to be nine one one like you see on TV, you know, we're just trying to, you know. Be the best state county nine one one we can with the technology we have, and, you know, just some software upgrades. Uh, we're not asking to replace everything, the only things we're trying to replace are things that have to be replaced every three or so years. Um, but, but it's because nobody's paid attention to this, this is coming up now, this isn't new, this just has been neglected.
Yeah, everything's been out of date and nothing, nothing, things have up with, it's, it's been issued.
Talking about the turnover, the turnover and of course overtime. We scheduled, I don't, I mean, a number of interviews in the past couple of weeks. I counted yesterday, was it eighteen? Eighteen that were scheduled interviews that didn't.
Didn't call them, nothing. If you can get some free people in here, man, we're sure taking.
Well, that's the thing, it, I can tell you, it, it's, it's not a matter of money.
Everybody.
Everybody.
I've had problems, everybody's had problems, I mean, it's.
They just don't wanna work, they wanna pay, but they don't wanna.
But we're definitely not gonna get them to work here if we don't pay them at least a more livable wage. I mean, what they're making now, I mean, I don't mind paying them a lower salary while they're learning for the first six months. But after they're certified and if they stay a certain amount of time, I wanna have a progression for them. To have something to look forward to, be able to move up and try to keep them, you know, try to have a career path where they could become a trainer. Or, you know, become a, a team leader or shift leader, I mean, those are things that, you know, really you need. You need the tools you need to do your job, and that's something I learned at the very poorly equipped FBI, believe it or not, we didn't have the tools, simple tools we needed to do our jobs. And then nine eleven happened, and we'd go and ask for money, they'd say no, and then after that, we had all the money in the world. But, you know, it, it took a bombing, you know, took several bombings for us to get that, and. And that's what we're trying to prevent some major thing, we're trying to fix this stuff and get it up, run to speed. And, and we won't, if we can run efficiently and we can retain our people and get them the tools they need to do their jobs. Um, that will go a long way, because there's nothing like being held responsible for something. Where you don't even have the tools and the authority to do your job, I mean, if you can fix that. Um, it will go a long way toward the retaining those who have what it takes, and it is hard to find them. I mean, it's hard to find people willing to work shifts, and, you know, so that adds another component, because shift work is no fun.
Their own call, twelve hour shifts.
No lunches, no fresh air.
If we took out and just changed and went to eight hour shifts, staff has to increase.
Part of the reason why we're on Twitter.
Well, and I, on nine eleven, I went to twelves, because we had eight hour shifts, but we were spread too thin, and I had to condense it to twelves, just so we could have the coverage. But, but that's, but we don't want that, that, that needs to be our emergency posture. You know, not our day-to-day posture, we need to have people where somebody calls us sick, we need to have, you know, right. So, so Tom, let me just, if I can just bring us back on task. Uh, do you want somebody to reach out to tourism to ask them about those other communities? What ideas, I mean, would that help you? I mean, I just feel like we're, we're saying the same thing.
I know, and I don't think it would help, and I'll tell you the reason why, call data drives staffing.
I, I realize that, but then you asked for ideas, so.
Oh, no, okay, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how, then we don't have any way to help you with the call data, we understand you need staff. We understand the call data.
Let me tell you what, I would like for you to call.
I, I just, what can we do to help? Other than what you've already stated. I, I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, Greg, do you have some thoughts, I mean? Like you're naming a revenue source, my correct, it, it's revenue, I mean, we, if you've done the analysis, then, I mean. It's up there now, but some of it, the shifts and then the analysis, I think is kind of over and under.
Ninety-four thousand a year.
That nine one one pays.
Pays ninety-four thousand a year at bonds, fifty years. Well, forty-six, I believe, it's, yeah, something like that.
So they, they got back to the county commission?
No, no.
A building commission?
Yeah, I think it's. I think it's building commission, yeah.
That's for this building?
Yeah, that, you know.
For the building and all, and the land.
And the land as well, cause they bought that from the.
Yeah, and you say that's for fifty years?
It's probably about forty-six now, so.
Yeah, I think it's, it matures in forty-six, twenty, forty-six, I think, I think. I couldn't believe it was so long, believe it or not.
Oh, we have a muscle, Mike. Smart choices, but anyway.
We have a career, career where you have a fee, that whole concept is gone now, because we can't.
Longevity is not, you're right, Phillip, it's not.
Yeah, pull that in here, like it used to, years ago, we could get career or even people that were coming in, but when they stayed for twenty years. It's not like that, it's just. Pay a bill and then when they get their bill paid.
And I wonder if tourism has realized, I guess what my point about tourism was funding, you know, I wonder if it realizes that. We need to advocate for funding for the emergency services that we're providing, now that we have this thirty percent influx or more. She doesn't like. Wolf Creek Park.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, well, let me ask you another question, um, so if I may. When you're talking about, so have, have you made contact with, uh, isn't there a state nine one one commission? That regulates the rate of damage when y'all were talking about that?
Actually, the one that you're talking about for the self, so I'm just doing the, uh, legislature.
Legislature, so do you think that's a venue at all?
Well, that, it doesn't come back up till January. Well, I mean, I just, I mean, we.
Would any lobbying help?
I, I don't know, I, Kevin?
Wireless regulation, the fee is set by state legislation. Right, and the state, the state fee is three dollars and forty-seven cents. Every two years, they have to analyze the data and scrub it to see if it raises twenty, it's either twenty or twenty-five percent, or it can decrease by twenty or twenty-five percent. Depending on your landline or your cell phone usage in your county.
So is there a way to, to. To make them aware of the, of the need of the debt of the.
Anytime that there's needs like that, so I'll, I'll tell you now, our landline, our wireless fees are always a tax. The wireless fees are always being looked at by other agencies throughout the state, like you said, on what, how much money they can get and what they can get it and use it for. So the nine one one fee, so a lot of the nine one one centers in the state of West Virginia is solely driven on wireless nine one one fees. That is their bread, that is where they, where they pay their bills. So there's other, there's other agencies, like two years ago in legislation, the state police. I know a lot of people like to beat up on the state police, but they was wanting to get some of those wireless fee monies. To start with their CAD system and start utilizing them for their dispatch, well, it never passed legislation. The word on the street is now that they're wanting to come back and try it again, now that they've got their CAD system and stuff up and running, they're wanting to get some of that wireless fee money. From the centers and from the state, nine one one centers are getting, if that's so, then that's gonna be money taken out of every county in the state. Of what their lump sum is every, at least every quarter. And like I said, that money's always there for somebody to try to get their, their paws on. And it's very important, so our state nine one one council, we now have a state nine one one president. Which is Dean Meadows, lifetime, lifetime, uh, nine one one director in Wyoming County, he's the only director that they ever had, he retired. The state hired him as our state nine one one president, he is the person that does all of our lobbying in Charleston, soon as legislation starts. Dean is there every day, we get emails, me, Tony and Phillip will be getting blasted with emails starting in January. This is what's going on at legislation, you need to contact your representatives, we need you here in legislation. Yeah, and there'll, there'll be, there'll be days that he'll say, I need all nine one one directors, emergency managers, we need you uniform in legislation.
I think we need to stay together as far as the support, I think we could, I think there's ways that we can show the need. And, and hopefully attain it that way. Um. I mean, we all know, you know, nobody, um, you know, wants to see. Certain things.
Well, I know, I know it's a little bit off topic, but I'll just throw this and try to give us a segue to see where we're going. They introduced a new retirement system for nine one one dispatchers. So the nine one one dispatchers will be able to do a new retirement system that takes you out of purged. To put you in the emergency service retirement system, the E S, the EMS RS. Which gives you a shorter retirement at an earlier rate.
That's good.
So what happens with that was, everybody joined together, not everybody, but other counties joined together and went to legislation and said, hey, look. We need to retain nine one one people, this is how we can think we can do it. Well, the retirement board said, okay, well, we can do this. So they presented it, they now sent us the documents, which will be coming before the commission in January. To look at to see if our county commission wants to join the EMS RS system. So when things come up like that, like now, we can do support letters to the PSC, it says, hey, look. When you're scrubbing this data through legislation. Take in and take into consideration that the landline fees are decreasing because if you look at it, there's less landlines.
Yeah.
There's less people with landlines in their homes.
Yeah.
More people are going with internet, voiceover the internet, they're going with wireless phones. Some of them are going with nine one one only phones, they don't even want you to call them, they just wanna be able to call nine one one. So then there, you're, you're losing more money. So it's important that they know that they look at the wireless fees and either A, increase it for us. Or move it, leave it where it's at and don't let nobody else have that money.
Right.
And this goes to your call data question. What is the landline call volume versus cell phone volume?
I don't think we can determine that, can you? It might then will be done through the black service, but I can't expect you to. Yeah, Paul's supposed to call me, I need that.
Can you ask me if we can get that? And I'd say, I'd say cell phones, I mean, I don't even have, I haven't had a landline besides for my business for probably ten years.
Understood, but that's the kind of data that you need, the leverage to go to the legislature to get them. To increase your revenue stream.
No, I agree with that, only thing is, we just hope state police don't take it.
And we gotta look to infrastructure grants?
All the money that's flying around, it, it, phone is infrastructure, nine one one is infrastructure.
Uh, Amy.
Amy.
Oh, Amy Danger? Ruth is in Angela, it depends on the nature of the grant, what it is. Yeah, I mean, we have people, Kevin Wright's grants over here, Abby at the park rights grants.
Okay, okay.
What's your say, John? We're going along with what you're saying, so about. Oh, but solutions for both the next, uh, yeah, next time in January, let's play a session. That probably would help if. We can get every police department, every fire department, not just, you know, mayor's of three or four pounds.
Yeah.
And the sheriff's department, I mean, everybody.
The emails out, so we can, I mean, larger group.
As an association.
Yeah. Not just faith county, but all of it, standing, all of it standing together.
And we can, once, once it's developed, myself, Tanya and Phillip, we blast, we can blast it out to the state. Nine one one council, I mean, we can send it to nine one one council, we can send it to emergency management council, we can blast it to all of our partners in the state. Cause we're all on that list, sir.
That's good, there you go.
I mean, it's a, it's a start, cause I mean, if it, if anything without.
And then if they, I mean, I'll even talk to Dean tomorrow and ask him what his thoughts are and what he sees coming down the pipe right now. Because he's been up there in interims anyhow, to see what he's hearing and. Maybe give us a little bit of insight.
On the infrastructure funding, um, usually they need with telecommunications broadband updates, probably, maybe we might be able to get some tower upgrades or tower additions where we need it. Like there are hollers in the valley right now where people, law enforcement goes up and nobody can communicate with them. It's pretty scary when something happens.
That's throughout West Virginia.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's one thing else with the wireless fees, a certain percentage of the wireless fees in the state. Go to nine one one tower assistance fund, that any nine one one center throughout the state can apply for.
Cause you, didn't you have the, um, redirect, the little things that can redirect over to that are kind of like little poppers? I know it's not as good, but.
Yeah, it's called microwave pops.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Is there a? Some type of letter, something that county commission can send to municipalities and stuff, or do we need to create, just have our own letter or something we could just sign off on? And then send that back to you so you can gather all that to have.
I think if you had points that you want us to co- cover in the letter.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, we can each craft the letter, but I think if you, these are the points, I'd really like for you to cover in your letter to the legislature. Or to whoever.
And when we have a council meeting, yeah, we just sign off on it and say, yeah, this is what we want, then we can kind of put a spin on it and fire it back to.
And then I think it would be good then to share, like I say, so we have other counties and, uh, fire departments, police departments.
Everybody.
Everybody working.
I know a can protest letter, when you still, the, the, we got California emails and everything else, whenever we got a certain amount from it. We're not looked at with as much weight by a surface model as, or individual.
Individual letters.
People that were affected.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, if we, if we craft our own, but just mention certain points.
Right, if we all use the same data. The nine one one center receives eight hundred and fifty thousand calls a year, you know, a hundred, one point six million.
And they say, and I live in Thurmond, and this is what we experience in Thurmond, and this is, you know, put the personal touch on it, and I think that's.
Here's a theme of preparedness, Graham.
Oh, awesome. Yeah, that'd be awesome.
The only thing was that you gotta look at what the scope is.
Right.
It's there with a net scope.
Yes.
Well, Grant, one time, that's not the plan, really.
That's not true. Grants can go on, depending on the, the funding source, they can go concurrently, year to year, three years, five years.
That's what we run into staffing, because we've heard many people, I was like, yeah, you have to keep that.
There's no chat.
Increase in wireless. Or the cell phone piece, which would be a permanent thing, you know, throughout the state. Uh, dedicated with increasing amount of money on short term, trying to get enough to nine one one. But that talks in January, might be the fastest one. Up, but, no, it was like.
No, the legislature, they vote for it in January, and it doesn't go into effect two years later.
Yeah, most, most of the bills, like, I will. Most of them are very effective, a lot.
Can you all put out some financial information to everybody that, uh, you know.
You have.
Yeah, on the center, on the revenue and on the expense.
That's what, I wanted to get them copied, I made it.
Online, yeah. An email a lot.
I don't know what kind of revenue, you know, I don't, but I'm sure.
He did about one point five a year.
Funding on that.
It's all popped in my head, I believe it's three fifty, about one point five.
Your, your entire revenue?
I think it's where it is. Try to break down all the.
Where is all our revenue?
I bet where it comes from, where, what it costs to, to this place operate. And everybody, then I got a projection, projected, uh, schedule.
I don't wanna critique it, I just want the knowledge.
That's what I was asking about.
I'm always in.
You brought the wrong computer. On the other computer.
But I mean, I, I put that all together so people understand what it costs.
Yeah.
That without staff. I've got a cost without staff. Every year, what it costs.
You have one, one, if currently, birth of what you want it to be, that pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I laid it all out.
And it's, and it's nothing, I mean, we're all very conservative about spending. Um, because our county hasn't been in the past, and we've been trying to, you know. Keep track of the money so we can spend it on the important things, like we have to sell people, of course, about water from here. And so, you know, we've been looking really hard at all this stuff, and none of it struck me as exorbitant, I'll tell you, looking at what. It, it, it's basically what we haven't been doing that we should have been doing, and what it's gonna take us to get the level that we need to be, that we, you know. Think the county needs us to be at. It's not so we can, you know, all wear cool uniforms and, you know, drive our own truck, pay for, but, you know, it's nothing like that, it's, it's very monetized.
And then, and then it's, I took in consideration leave, sick, training, vacation time and.
Holidays, I took in consideration all that.
Yeah, it's like that, yeah.
I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yeah.
Maybe it's the, toward, toward Tom, maybe. Is there a national nine one one emergency operations association? That, rather than us create, uh, reinventing the wheel, are there influence for like? Uh, a city of Los Angeles versus the city of Charlotte? That is driven, that you have so many calls and they have a tent for what their scheduling, the number of employees that they have.
That's a good idea, it's worth.
You get from.
You get from that, yeah, I, it's, it's something to compare that. Well, I'd like to compare what I come up with compared to what FCO says it should be. Yeah, cause you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a nine one one professional. I'm just hearing what you're doing, but this is a professional organization, no, yeah, it's a little different, no, I, no, I agree. You know, I agree a hundred ten percent, maybe that's something to bring in to, to you to the, oh, I'd like, I'd like to see what it is.
It would be interesting to see if there are standards, but one thing I've noticed, just in discussions I've had with people who live out state and work in these different businesses, is that. That there's a different formula for just about every organization, whether it's, you know, it, within the state of West Virginia or outside, like some people contract out their grant writing, or they. Contract out different things, or like, you know, we have here in West Virginia where we have the authorities, a couple of authorities with the nine one ones and that sort of thing, it just seems to be varied. I mean, I'm sure there's probably some recommended, you know, assumption of what staffing should be or something like that, but. But as far as the amount of funding it takes to do certain things, like other, you know, it's, I think it's gonna vary on types of things that happen in that region. You know, the types of accident, because of our weather, you know, or things, our roads, all the weeds and conditions.
Cause you know you under shot it, cause you're.
No, I mean, I'd like to see how close I tend to, uh.
The sheriff.
Cause I'm not, I may, I'm still living, I'm not, uh. I'm not an hour long question. Man, where do you, where do you live at?
The town of Thurmond.
Are you guys down to three people?
There is five.
Five.
Five dollars.
Christmas lights are up now, so let's check it out.
My friends come, I pick up my friends and drop off the train regularly, probably.
Have this been corrected?
Do another lesson, you know, by the water.
Oh, you're talking about, you know, about, uh.
Where the numbers were a little bit off?
Well, actually.
And it wasn't you, it was just the number.
But it, it's okay.
I was just asking.
The, the, everything's right, so don't pay attention to the dispatch calls.
Oh.
And the percentage, I'm sure, I, I got, I guess, I guess.
Oh, no, it's that comment, so this one's still hadn't been correct?
No, I haven't corrected, I haven't, I haven't touched it, I'm not gonna touch it.
So which, which ones do we take off the dispatch?
I wouldn't even worry about the dispatch calls, the, uh, calls per day and the call percentage. But everything else is correct. And I don't know whether these are incorrect or not, I haven't even checked.
You said that you get a fee from the park servants?
Yes, it's not in there.
Can you give me a guess on what it is?
I think it's. Twenty nine.
Thirty nine, thirty nine six.
Six.
What, what's the formula for deriving that figure?
That's in the contract, we put, I, the park service said they would pay.
Did you leave a copy of that contract?
Well, they just updated it.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, it was.
Kevin, I thought it was gone, yeah, the, the day in the last year.
Yeah, it was last year.
March.
March, last year.
Well, March, this year, March.
Yeah.
They should.
Yeah, so it's like, it's either eighteen. Sixteen or eighteen or nineteen hundred per day, per person.
Cause then you also think you're in.
Well, the problem with that is just having the equipment to do it with.
Oh, yeah.
It's only four feet of position.
Well.
Well, you said that this past year was a hundred eighty five thousand, in inbound and outbound calls total.
Yeah.
That comes through the, the, uh, dispatching center.
Yeah. Yes, we're busy.
I can send this out to anyone else that wants it, who's on the Zoom call as well.
Yes, please.
I don't know if you said, how long is your contact with the park service?
Five years.
And when was that established?
Anyone?
It's renewed March, wouldn't it?
You have, you have option period one, option period two, option period three, option period four, option period five.
Every year, if you have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they have those, they have the ability to sign and reviews, and we have the ability to sign and review. I think it's thirty nine six a year.
You just entered it in March of twenty twenty one?
Twenty twenty two, it was renewed.
Did you say you have a copy of that contract?
We'll have to get it off the DOJ site.
Okay, it'd be interesting to know how that formula would have derived.
I know Raleigh County did have them, they come over the next, uh, Sniff's County. They, uh, Raleigh County did have them, they came to faith county. Raleigh County was dispatching all of them.
So the alarm fees dropped from two thousand nine twenty one to twenty twenty two?
Yep.
And since that, what, why?
Cause people are going commercial alarm systems.
Like rain.
Like rain and ADP and different like that.
And they're not required to pay any, even if they subscribe to one place.
If, if anybody, so if they have a landline fee, then they get charged that landline usage. But if they just have a reporting terminal, which is through internet.
What protects? Why can't they be charged then? Is there some type of protection?
Something that we can't leverage as a center.
Yeah, why not?
Cause it's not a, what, internet is not a regulatory thing for us. It'd have to go through public service and public service under state code is not regulatory for internet.
So, so that means they can use the change. How does that all get to you? Voice over IP?
Nope.
Or is it coming from, what is it coming from? How do you know that?
Well, it goes straight to the security company, and then the security company calls in.
So maybe you start looking at security companies charging a, charging a security company a fee for your services.
There you go.
Cause you're providing that.
Because you were providing. Right, they're not gonna answer the, right.
Also, but also, if it's, if a call that comes in for service, then we can't neglect the call either. If a call comes in, we have to answer the call for service, it comes in, we have to dispatch it.
What's your, what's your alarm?
Three hundred a year.
I think that's another thing. To charge.
And what, so what, well, yeah.
How many accounts do you have?
Remember how many we have, we just went through the audit on that.
About sixty.
Yeah. That's sixty individual homes.
Sixty individually, no, they're businesses.
Our businesses too. Like we have Faith National Bank, we have their, their, uh, agents. Uh, we have Bell Techs, uh, the new. Um, substance recovery place in Mount Hope. Uh. Just different, you know, it can be business, it can be.
The security company is getting paid and getting windy, and you guys are getting poor.
And, and with the, with the new thing with like Amazon and these other companies are having to pay. Then I would think they should have to come into compliance, and I think that's a certain idea.
But I mean, I was just going, all about this, they could pay for a year, then they just say, I only have a few left. And in the phone rings, we have things.
Exactly.
And then, we're liable for that, emergency traffic.
I realize, I realize that.
Yeah.
I'm calling April, and I don't pay my, they're gonna keep billing her, they're gonna send her to a glass agency, why can't the nine one one center, if they have to answer a call from that. Security company, send them an invoice, if they can't pay it, then you're in for, or you're a glass company.
Honestly, I think that would be a legal question that we need to look at, if we can actually build a alarm company.
I think we need to change the legislation.
I agree.
I mean, I think that's, needs to be on our list. I mean, I think that's, needs to be on our list, but thanks. Is that we need some way to.
What about the association account? I know we have the municipal, what about the association counties, is this something that? You guys have talked to them about, or?
Not yet. I think, I think what we ought to do, kind of based on your suggestion earlier, is get together. What we think we need to do, what we need to push for, what we're seeing here, legislative. Just push it through them.
I'm sure the association account is just like the municipal league, has a strong voice.
Well, they do have lobbyists for sure.
Yeah.
They do.
Are y'all pretty active in the, the uh. Association.
No, I go to their training, but they send too many emails. Ruth monitors, Ruth monitors them and sends them to us.
Yeah, she's one, yeah.
I think it's a viable tool, but.
Yeah, who's that, what Tom?
Nothing. I said it's like being told, voluntold instead of volunteering.
No, I, I mean, I go to their trainings and talk to them there about issues and stuff, but they really do, they send a ton of emails, and I just tell them. Have the bandwidth for all of them. So Ruth and Amy monitor them and Warren is doing. All right, well, it sounds like we laid a good foundation. For discussions on this stuff, and I've got a list started.
Good talk.
Have another one.
About some ideas.
I have a huge question. Okay, how do y'all spend a hundred thousand dollars in utilities for this building?
Well, the phone company's forty six thousand a month.
A hundred thousand dollars a year.
In that?
For this square footage.
That's really not the part of it, it's because we are a P S A, so our phone stuff is. Very expensive. We pay contract money, we want it to keep it maintained and going. And plus all the lines that we have, we're maintaining four nine one one trucks that aren't cheap. Because of nine one one services.
So those are, they're not norm, they're not water sewer electric.
I mean, it's, that stuff's in there.
Everything's included, that's why I said the phone bill's like forty six thousand dollars alone. I mean, it's, it, this center is not cheap to operate, that's why I put all this together, so everybody get a general idea. Instead of me just saying it's expensive.
Yeah.
It's not cheap to run this.
And so we would understand how expensive it is to run, cause nobody's looked at it this hard. I mean, we've just been hobbling along.
Hmm. Yeah.
Our courses, like different mapping, so they're pretty different there.
We actually, they started that history down. Yeah, they were in our cat server remotely. They're viking force in it right now. Like putting all the software and all that. And Diana's got to get, um, she's got to export some shake files to them, and they'll get through that and. Certainly in the, the base map and everything, so it's moving, so.
Yeah, one thing that, that I've been recommending, we use nine one one, grabbing our non-emergency lines, where we have water outage, just stuff like that, because Kevin. We have especially the sustained ones. Uh, when our P S Ds are having issues, we had people without water for two weeks before anybody even complained to us. And. So if they call in through our non-emergency number, then Kevin, who's our emergency manager, can arrange to get water to those places, or work with the fire chiefs, or wherever we need to. Put these water buckles. This during the cold weather, we have to have a place to house them. Too, we can't just stick them outside. But um. But we've had that happen recently, both in Armstrong Creek and. Um, of Hamilton and some other places there. Yeah.
Golly River P S D. All, there were three P S Ds that's had major water. And then we lost.
But that's a good way for us to track, like when we're dealing with the flood, when we're dealing with the fire, even non-emergent things. They put the calls in here because our emergency manager works out a nine one one center, and that way he can know when there's contaminated water. Um, issues that we thought were resolved in some of these cases. Or new ones. All right, well, it sounds.
Something, something else that I just want to maybe bring up. If we continue working our alarm system. We may tend to need to look at imposing an alarm. Uh, what do you wanna call it? Yes, so we're. Call, uh, yes, a fine for every, if you go out and it's a false alarm, the first time it's a. That's like, well, the first time usually it's a warning, after that it's fifty dollars. After that, it's seventy five dollars, after that, it goes up to a hundred dollars. But you wouldn't believe a lot of the false alarms we get, um, so.
I would have quite a lot of them, yeah.
I don't think Tim would probably like that, wouldn't he, Danny?
Reason why I brought that up is we just got an email, three, either under two C from another nine one one center looking at doing that. Because they monitor alarms as well.
Just come up with the recommendation for us.
Right, we were talking about that years ago, and she said on the road, she said, when we worked in Florida. Oh, amen.
Do you have additional ideas that you have? Please feel free to reach out to. Our admin, and you can call her at three oh four five seven four twelve hundred.
The extension.
Just. Just call that number, and that way they'll be able to take all the notes and everything.
Have you ever called that number?
I think it's forty.
Yeah.
Forty two ninety or something.
Four two nine zero. We'll go to Wilbur.
Cause the other way. Four two nine zero.
Yeah.
Or email us. Most of you have our email.
Text me.
Yeah, that's. You can text me too.
Does anyone else have any questions?
And I have an appreciation, I appreciate.
All right, that's a journey. Thank you, guys.